Okay, good evening everyone, I'm calling order to common council for the Gladstone City, July 28, 2015, it's now 6:31 PM. Uh, Janine, could you do the roll call please?
Counselor Sickman?
Here.
Counselor Mercile?
Here.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor McMahon?
Here.
Counselor Reisner?
Here.
Mayor Jacob Ellis?
Here. Uh, if you'll join me for the pledge of allegiance please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, um, make sure if you want to speak at any portion that you fill out a yellow card and hand it to Janine up here, the city recorder, assistant city manager, um, and that's on the topics, or just in general if you wanted to speak in the beginning. I'll take a few seconds here, want to talk to the council specifically and the audience about some of the changes to the regular meeting, um, agenda items. Uh, there's a little bit of changes and we're trying to morph this to fit us the best. Uh, we noticed that after the flag salute, we asked for, uh, there's a, a piece in here that says agenda additions or corrections. That gives the opportunity for staff to ask to then morph the agenda one way or the other or take something off that isn't quite up to snuff. Um, at that time, we're not going to take any comments from the audience on that issue. That's just basically for us, housekeeping wise, uh, we can change and modify the agenda as needed. Uh, we want to mention the, uh, fill out the card to address any issue on the agenda. Um, we don't take, uh, comments about specific regular agenda items in the beginning. If you just hold it for that specific topic, then you'll have the opportunity to talk. But still fill out a yellow card for that. Um, we've added extra business from the audience at the end of the meeting before business from the council to let anyone in attendance, the ability to address council about any topic not on the agenda before we begin to wrap up the meeting. Now that's added, we haven't had a discussion on that, and that's something we could amongst ourselves, maybe just see if it works, if it doesn't work, it's just another opportunity for them to get their last piece in, the audience's last piece in before we, we wrap it up on our end.
No, I like that, actually the school district has done that in the, I don't know if they still do, but in the past they have, which I thought was a, a, a nice way of keeping the audience and the public involved.
Okay, um, and also there's a new section on the bottom of the agenda to track issues that the council hasn't discussed but, uh, doesn't have a, a resolve as of yet. In other words, called, it's called business carried forward. It's just a way to keep track of some of the issues that are not, that are getting worked on but not to the completion and will rise to the top or fall off the list as priorities come and go. So, those are kind of the, again, this is all, we're trying to make it work for us as best it can. So they'll just want to point those out before we got going. Again, we could have discussions whether or not any of those cars heartburn or we want to switch them up, we can do that. Uh, but that's a way we'll operate for a while until we bend into another roadblock somewhere. Okay, um, agenda additions or corrections, anything for tonight? I have nothing from staff. Okay, anybody here want to move anything around? Um, and right now we're doing business from the audience, anybody fill out a yellow card, want to speak at this time?
No.
Okay, there's nothing there. Uh, moving down to the consent agenda, uh, we've got three items. One's the approval amended from July 14, 2015, that's number one. 1.1 is the final approval for payment for Cross Park, the ADA ramp. And item number 1.2 is the local license application for Duke's, uh, for the fest--
Country Pawn Grill, yes sir.
Okay. Uh, I would like to just take the final approval of the payment for A- the ADA park off the consent agenda, move it down to the regular agenda because I just have a couple of things I want to address and then, so, that's good. We'll move it down as item number four, or five, on the regular agenda item?
It can stay 1.1 if you wanted to--
Oh, okay, to be consistent. But we will take it last?
Yes sir.
Okay.
Well, I'll move that we approve the consent agenda with the Cross ADA Park taken off.
I second that. Okay, a motion was made to approve the consent agenda by Counselor McMahon, seconded by Counselor Mercile, any discussion? Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? With the exception, I'm sorry, of the final approval of the Cross Park ADA, I'm sorry. Okay, so, uh, the consent, consent agenda has been approved, down to the regular agenda items, um, we are going to do item number two, which is Resolution 1058, Earth Crusaders.
Yes sir. Um, what you have in front of you is the same agenda I brought to you on July 14th. Uh, we had hopes at that point that Earth Crusaders and the city could reach an agreement on, uh, extending that, that, uh, lease until October 14th. Uh, that did not come to fruition, the attorneys talked, and at this point, I brought the agenda item back to you again, however, where we had anticipated, uh, and it says in the staff report, August 28, 2015 will be the recommended last day. Uh, our attorney took a look at this and we, has rewritten the agenda. You guys all have a fresh copy in front of you, and the new agenda item, as well as the staff report, should say, uh, August 31st is their last day. It's a couple of days, but the attorney, uh, wanted it that way, so that's the way I'm going with it. And, uh, the agenda item has been rewritten, taken a couple of rareses out and put a few in, but it, the, the, the direction of the agenda item is still, uh, August 31st will be our last, uh, last associated with Earth Crusaders.
Anyone wishing to make a comment on this item? Hearing nothing? All in a tent of motion on Resolution 1058?
I make a motion to approve the Resolution 1058.
Can, can we add as amended, Counselor, please?
As amended.
Yes sir, thank you.
Second? Okay, the, uh, motion was made by Counselor Mercile on Resolution 1058 as amended and seconded by Counselor Sickman, uh, discussion. Yes sir.
Just for clarification, because if I remember right, a few months ago, uh, when these people were before us, they had said that if they could just get through the end of their grant cycle, everything would be good, and I believe that was a September, October date, something like that. And then, at our last meeting, we said, it was like a September, October date, and just work it out with city attorneys, and this will all be good. And from, what I'm seeing is, they were not able to work that out.
No sir, they weren't.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, it was motion seconded, um, we had a discussion, all in favor of passing Resolution 1058 as amended. Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? No? Okay, Resolution 1058 has been approved. Item number three, Resolution 1061, which is the approval of the ballot title and caption, authorizing city to begin project over a million dollars.
Yes sir, um, at this point, I'm not asking for a resolution this evening, um, this agenda item has been written, as I, uh, mentioned I would do, um, this really, I'm sorry, I'm looking for my notes here and it's not, uh, it's not here, okay, I'm good. Um, not looking for a resolution, this is the first time you've seen it, I haven't even emailed this around to you. Uh, what I would like for you to do is review this, uh, any, you got any questions, let me know, because it will come back to you on April, excuse me, August 11th, which is our date to get it, uh, approved by you guys. The attorney has already looked at this, um, I will tell you that on page two of this, where I've got, uh, dollars and cents, some of those values will change, I went through the urban renewal, um, agency, uh, tonight, and found there's 4.5 million there, not really 5 million. Um, sale of certain city properties, I found an estimate, uh, there that, uh, would show that property be worth 3.5 million and not, uh, 2.5, but I'm going to see if I can get an appraiser to take a look at that. So I'm going to do some work on those numbers, and next time you see this, this will have, uh, more exact numbers, if you will, in there, so, um, with that, uh, it's not anything that you have to take an action on, take a look at it, call me, email me, uh, and then next time we get together and talk about it, I'll ask for your resolve.
So we'll see this again in its final one?
Yes sir.
August 11th?
Yep, and that will be, uh, you know, I'm really trying to get this done ahead of time because there won't be a lot of time after that to make the ballot if we've got major questions or there's some, some, that substance that, uh, that changes.
Okay. Okay. All right, uh, moving down to item number four, Resolution 1063, which is the tri-city governance, and I think we have some, I guess we should recognize some people in the audience that are germane to this conversation, um, Clackamas County Chair Ledlow is in the audience, and I'm sorry, I do not know your name sir from Oregon City.
Ian Holliday.
Oh, well, you're undercover, who is it, Janine, next to you?
Oh, this is my right wing manager Lance Paulson.
Oh, alright. Ron Holliday, mayor of Oregon City. Alright, so Resolution 1063 is the tricity governance of, um, the sewer plant, and--
I'm, I'm afraid I don't have much of a staff report for you on this one, uh, this is coming from Counselor Johnson, it'd probably be better that he were to discuss this item and, uh, with that?
Thanks, Mr. Schultz. This, this is an issue that runs pretty deep. The, uh, Regional Wastewater Advisory Committee to the Clackamas County Commissioners is going to meet two days from now, and, uh, they're going to consider, um, merging two sewer districts, our sewer district and, uh, CCSD. Um, there are probably more questions than there are answers about that, including why they're moving so fast, where their hurry is there, um, and they have presented a white paper, that's 25 pages of, this is really good stuff, and you should do it because we say so. Um, and I want to point out one line that are within this white paper that they provided for the regional meeting. There's been a common point of discussion within water environment services of the current structure of two separate districts, while saving rate payers a certain amount of money, part and part, is somewhat inefficient and complicates long-range planning efforts. They spend the next 25 pages repeating that in one form or another, with very few facts and very little proof. It's my opinion, after studying this, and talking to a lot of people, and sitting through a lot of meetings, that the city of Gladstone is better staying within a district that includes Westland and Oregon City, and not getting involved with another sewer district. Yes, some of that has unfortunately already happened, a certain amount of nose of the camel into the tent, I think we still have a chance to stop the entire camel from walking in. Um, we at one point had very reliable sewer system with plenty of space for future growth, and, um, I think that's been used up by the other sewer district now. Um, I, again, I think that it would be best if we stay as a, as a separate district, I think that we would have more control over our rates. I think that if we come, become part of a larger region, we'll be subject to the rates of fast-growing cities. I am aware that Oregon City has some growth and, and has, has expected to still have some. Our friends to the east in Happy Valley are experiencing what for the Portland metro would probably best be described as explosive growth, and would, and expect that to continue further. Um, there's also a lot of growth potential in the unincorporated areas outside of Happy Valley, and the county is aggressively building subdivisions that put stress on the sewage system outside of the, uh, Happy Valley area. Damascus is a wild card, um, nobody really knows what's going to happen there, kind of looks like they're heading for disincorporation, and, uh, Happy Valley is always eager to annex people who want to be in a city, so we're likely to see even more growth there. I really would rather that the folks, the good folks of Happy Valley and unincorporated deal with their own sewer problems, instead of sending them our way to deal with as they have been doing. Um, and I think that, uh, I think it would benefit us at this time to tell the county that we want a change of governance where we govern ourselves, we're capable of doing that. And it also sends a strong message that I can take to the regional advisory committee two days from now. Did I miss anything? Like I said, the, the subject goes very deep, I mean, we could spend the rest of the night talking about nothing but sewage, but, uh, I think those are the high points.
One, do you want to talk about this now, or do we want to?
I, I think, I, I'd like to give an opportunity for people, you know, that are close to this or have something that they want to add or subtract, uh, as Steve was saying, and I'm, me personally, there's just, you know, these unanswered questions, and I, I don't know where the answer lies, we're kind of relatively, or at least I am relatively new to this struggle, uh, it's hard for me to wrap my brain around years of back and forth, so, um, is anybody out there wanting to address this at this time? Any, anybody in the audience want to just give their three minutes, be a pro con, negative peers and, uh, answer a question? Yes sir?
Do you have any cards?
No, I do not have a card.
He's, he's smiling, that's a good sign.
Well, first of all--
Uh, can you just put the record?
Brian Johnson, 17 Anard Cornell Place, Gladstone, Oregon. Okay. First of all, the county is the one that took over your dilapidated system that Oregon City and Gladstone had. They're the ones that got you the money, so if you want to throw them under the bus for bailing you guys out years ago, I guess you can do that. The next thing is, what's the percentage of residents in Gladstone that go into SD1? 10%? 15%?
A few, yeah.
Okay, you guys are not paying SD1's rate, right? You're paying Tri-City's rate. Why would I want to subsidize your residents? So, John's here, I want you next week to find out how many residents in this town, and raise their rate to the rate that I'm paying. Because I, my rate just went up $2,050. And you have the best rate in the entire region. Go to Oak Lodge, I'm in Oak Lodge, I'm in Tri-Cities, I'm in Oregon City. And Oregon City, who, your residents are going to pay because they've used the, the, uh, the right-of-way fee for the sewer line. So your residents are going to pay for that. You understand that? They, you ought to see one of their bills, they've got road maintenance on the water bill, they've got sewer maintenance on the water bill, so when they talk about trying to save people money, they don't care about saving you guys any money, because they're not saving our own people any money. So, you better figure out, I mean, if you want to do this, that's fine, but if I was the county, I would just tell you to buy us out. You guys can build your own thing, give us the 120 million dollars, and they can build a regional one down in the industrial area in Milwaukee and be done. Before you go, a question if I may. So, when you talked about the rates, are they talking about wholesale or retail? Wholesale. You have, like all the people Sherwood Forest up in that area are going to SD1, but you're paying, Gladstone's residents are paying the rate for the Tri-City rate. You're going into my sewer plant that I'm subsidizing your rate payers. Because you're not even paying the right rate. You're giving those people a better discount than they should be, so all the people in SD1 are subsidizing your Gladstone residents that are into that district. You have the lowest rate of anybody. So, throw them under the bus. And you have an article on the review that I believe is going to be retracted next week.
Ten minutes.
That's you?
Thanks.
Thanks. Anyone else want to step up?
Life card.
Yeah, step on up.
Well, that's interesting.
So, uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and counselors, my name's Dan Hall, I'm the mayor of Oregon City. Um, it's the first time I've ever been to you, one of your council meetings, so it's exciting for us to have, start having a, a good relationship across the river, so we're excited about that. Um, I just want to bring up a couple of things, um, I'm not sure what all that was about, about, you know, how this thing got started, but, just a little tiny bit of history, back in the late, mid 70s, Gladstone and Oregon City had a joint plant now where McDonald's is on the river, and it was failing. And Westland had a plant on their side of the river that was failing, and the three cities together couldn't quite figure out a way to make this happen, but the feds had a whole bunch of money available for just this kind of thing. So, the county, because this was the only mechanism at the time through the legislature to be able to combine these three cities, put together this ballot measure that said, do you want to form this district? And it was formed by the citizens of Oregon City, Gladstone, and Westland. So, that was done, and then in 1980, they, we voted to, for $25 million in bonds, but was matched by a 75% match from the federal government. So, 75 million of that came from the feds, 25 came from inside the district. So anybody who says the county owns the plant is just confused. The citizens of Oregon City, Gladstone, and Westland own this plant, and the citizens of Oregon City, Gladstone, and Westland should be the governing body of this plant. Oregon City and Westland own the South Fork Water Board, which provides wholesale water to Oregon City and Westland. And we have a, a group called the South Fork Water Board that's comprised of three city commissioners of the mayor from Oregon City, and three city counselors, and the mayor from Westland. And the way that governance model works is you can't pass any legislation without at least one affirmative vote from each of the cities, so that prevents either any side from being able to wholesale take control of the district, and that's worked for, gosh, I don't know, I think we're on our 150, 100th year this year, I think is what, what John's doing. So, we've been doing this for a long time, and that kind of governance model works, and if we think about the fact that none of the county commissioners who try to be CCSD1 with this hat, and West with this hat, and West, or, and CCSD1 with this hat, none of them signed this district, none of them pay the rates. So, I think this is a, we, Steve and I have had a lot of conversations, I've met with most of you, uh, Mr. McMahon, I have not had an opportunity to meet with you, but look forward to that. Um, but I think this is a, a good way to move on down the road and get some control of our sewer district, so that we can make decisions, and so that we can negotiate in good faith with CCSD1, should we decide that a regional model is a better way to look at this. So, that's all I have, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Three minutes.
Thanks sir.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Start at whatever the new one.
Well, one of the things, um, is can you maybe highlight some of the stuff in the Sissel report? Steve, I know we took and we requested that I have them work as our engineers and gather some information.
Uh, yeah, we requested a proposal from Sissel Engineering. Um, let me back up a step, my first meeting with Greg Geist, who is the West Director, he was an interim West Director at the time, he's, he is the West Director now, uh, he said that they had, uh, flow data, um, that, uh, he could show the flow, flow data over many years and how it had increased, from the three cities and from CCSD number one. Um, and I quite frankly believe that Mr. Geist was, uh, offering that in good faith. Um, but after a while, it was apparent that the data was not everything that we all thought it was going to be. Um, I asked our council to, uh, allow me to work with our local engineer, Pat Sissel, on a flow meter study to sort out the data, see what was there, uh, find out if there was, uh, anything that could be used, and, uh, Mr. Sissel is out of town right now, he's given kind of a preliminary overview of where he's at. Bottom line is, he's not going to be able to do the flow meter study because the data is spotty, um, it's questionable, like, he is saying that it could be 5% error, closer to 10%. Uh, oftentimes, um, meters will get blocked, and days or weeks will go by before they even know that they have a blocked meter. Uh, the meters are not connected by any kind of a network, um, it requires sending somebody down to the manhole with a machine to read the meter, taking the data back to the office, downloading it, putting it into a spreadsheet. So, our, our engineer, Pat Sissel, and we should have a final report from him at the, uh, the next meeting, he is, he's asking me for direction basically, but it doesn't sound like he's going to be able to get that, uh, flow meter data to us. Um, there was also discussion about the difference between, uh, flow and load, and how that affects the plant, and it appears that there is no load metering at all on, uh, Gladstone, Westland, or Oregon City, there is on CCSD number one. Um, so getting, getting the picture that I had originally hoped to get, looks like at this point in time, it's not going to be possible. Thank you. That's it? Tom?
I, I was just curious about the flow data, and, I guess, I'll, I'll ask you one question. Uh, from what you read there, is Pat saying, Pat Sissel saying, that his data would come out with, and normally we look for a 95% combs level, uh, and maybe 10% lower than that? Or it's way lower than that?
I, I think it's, I think it's unknown, I'll, let me, let me quote him from an email he sent me. Uh, Dale Rich Ryan is an engineer, a contract engineer for West, and this is Pat's writing, he said, uh, um, Dale is still not sure how far back they can get us complete data, likely not very far, and it's likely not going to be complete data due to missing bits and pieces of information. He said it's, it's typically, I'm sorry, spelling error, he said it typically doesn't work out when he tries to add up all of the meter information and get it to equal what's coming into the plant. The numbers don't typically work out that closely due to limitations of the flow meters, lost data due to blockages, et cetera. So I don't know if that helps or not.
Okay, he's not, yeah, I, he's saying it'll be, at this point, he's not sure what they'll come up with, period.
Yes, and, and that's kind of what the engineer who works for the plant, contract engineer is saying as well.
Yeah, which you may get up to 80% or whatever, but you may not get close.
You may, you may not get anything, yeah.
Okay. It's kind of discouraging after thinking we're going to get good numbers.
Yeah, and again, in all fairness, I, I do believe Greg Geist made the offer in good faith, and he just didn't realize where this was at, so. Um, I, I have a couple of things, I've had some notes that I've written here, um, the CCSD area of Gladstone, I've seen the map, it's not a very large area, I don't think. I'm, I'm guessing the history is that that part of town got annexed into Gladstone, but I, I don't know. Um, the right-of-way issue from Oregon City, we have had some fairly lively conversations about that, as Mr. Paulson knows, we've talked about this before, we've tried to find, uh, some solutions for grandfather in Gladstone into it, and, and those types of things, and Westland. Um, it's been explained better to me with those conversations, that Oregon City has a right-of-way fee and everything, including themselves. And, uh, above and beyond that, it appears that the courts have resolved this issue at this point, and that, uh, who knows, it could go to the legislature, something could change, but as of right now, it looks like the right-of-way issue has been solved, and, uh, the courts have ruled completely, to the best that I can tell, in Oregon City's favor. And so I, I'm not expecting that to change. I have also asked our attorney for an opinion, and he's of the same opinion that we're, what we see is what we're going to get. My guess, I hate to say this, is that-- My guess, I hate to say this, is that somewhere along the line, we're probably going to have to pay that. Somewhere along the line, the county's going to stop charging Oregon City people and paying our rates. It may end up in a courtroom somewhere between Oregon City and the county. I don't know where that goes. But my guess is that ultimately Gladstone and Westland are going to have to pay for those things. To pay for those things, we will probably go down the road and have our own right-of-way program to cover the costs of, that we're being charged from Oregon City. That's, that's a guess, it's an opinion. Stay tuned to this channel, we'll probably see more about that somewhere along the line. Then we have the lowest rates in Clackamas County, I think that's worth protecting. I really do. That we got it right, that we got lucky, that we were in the right place at the right time, that the federal government had money, that we were able to bond out, the rest of it within the three cities. I don't think we should be punished for that. I think that that, every dog has its day, we got lucky. And I realize there's, there's people in Clackamas County who I think have some envy over that, but, you know, I think we should do our best to protect that. The formation of the district, I handed out, it's very brief, the ballot from 1980, I believe, that Oregon City was nice enough to find and give us a copy of. I want to point out that there were actually two ballot measures. One was in the seventies, and then the latest one, it did pass. The first, first ballot measure was to include a large area of unincorporated Clackamas County. And voters sent that one down in defeat. A second ballot measure was formed that only included the three cities, and that passed. So, the cities, even back then, really didn't want unincorporated Clackamas County to be a part of the district. And they made that fairly clear within those ballot measures. Finally, one, one final point, notes to the speakers. I sometimes, and I get into trouble at the Regional Waste Advisory Committee where I talk about turning the pipeline off. I have caught Holy Heck from, Councilor Powers from Milwaukee over saying that. Look, reality, folks, we aren't going to be able to do that. I think that negotiation with CCSD is a good idea. I think that there will still be a relationship of some kind there. But I think there are some very, I think there are some large ethical problems with the county negotiating with itself. And with Chair Ludlow and his predecessor signing both sides of an agreement, I think it's, I assume it's much like our mayor, who signs everything that he's told to sign. But I think there are some ethical problems with that. And we have, the three cities, Tri-Cities has its own governance, and the governance represents the rate payers within the district, we're all going to live here, that we would be in a better negotational position. I think that, I think negotiations would be better. I think they would be more fair, and I think they would be more open. So, I think that that is, that is a real benefit. But although, like I say, a lot of joked around about turning the valve off, that's not going to happen. We'll still have, we'll still have CCSD, and we'll still negotiate with them. And IGAs that are in place today, they're not going to stop just because governance changes. The IGAs are still going to be in place, and will continue on. The 2008 IGA does not expire until 2030. Negotiations to start 2027, if I remember the reading correctly. So, there is some stability in that, that right now. So, that's what I have right now.
Don, Matt, can I ask a couple of clarifications on, from some of the things Steve brought up? The, you talked about the governance, and then the appeal. And you said the city, our city attorney looked at the court cases and said that they were pretty strong on...
I'm paraphrasing, but yes, that was his, that was his, that's what I got out of the conversation.
And from my understanding, the county, on behalf of Tri-Cities, is intending to appeal the decision? Did they, have they came before Tri-Cities Advisory Committee and asked if that's what we want to spend money on, or is this something they've just...
Tri-City Advisory Committee has not met since that, since these court rulings. Can you fill in some of the blanks, Mr. Schultz?
Yeah, I really don't have very many of them. Like you say, they haven't met since the court rulings were there. The county administrator took a straw poll between the three city managers, and two of the three did not support an appeal. So, that's about all I can tell you.
Okay, thank you. To you, Mr. Neal.
I have a lot of questions, and I know there's not very many answers, so I'm good with what we've been presented.
Okay.
I'm pretty much good. I think this kind of finally solidified my opinion, and I will, you'll find my opinion out in a minute when I vote, I guess. But I think this is probably the right direction for the city and for Tri-Cities. And then, I still anticipate in five or 10 years that there is going to be a merger of some sort, a combination of everything, but then at least it will be from the cities, Tri-Cities perspective, and Clackamas County Service District's perspective, as far as how that is handled, and all the minutia of that. So, that's all I have right now.
Well, I mean, as far as adopting the resolution, and I'll just say, there's some verbiage in this that I'm not 100% comfortable with. I mean, it's, you know, it's just too black and white for me. I mean, if anybody gained anything from this whole conversation, is that really, come on, this is years down the road, and nobody can sit anywhere and convince me as a grown man that they've got the answer. And some of the verbiage in this resolution is that it's absolute, that this is, they're wrong, and they did this, and they did that. And that's kind of, besides getting into the nuts and bolts of what they're going to do and not going to do, I'm, I'm really kind of concerned about just approving the resolution as is. I just don't like some of the paragraphs. And so, that's kind of one of the things I just wanted to bring up, and I don't know if we can talk about it, remove them, change them, whatever. I'm assuming we're here to pass it as is, and that would be my concern. A couple of things to carry forward. I don't know what sparked the conversation for the county to make this merger discussion. I was under the understanding, and this is part of the unknown, because I didn't go, I don't go to the meetings, the advisory board meetings, that there was going to be a sit-down conversation to kind of try to vet out where we're going. And so, I do have a concern with that.
That there wasn't such a meeting?
Well, that I, that I don't know anything of it. I mean, maybe we weren't informed, but I just, you know, within the last week or two, since we got this documentation, it's kind of like, this is going to happen. And I was under the impression from conversations when we had them all here, back in March, I believe it was, we had the big, you know, Oregon City was here, Board was here, Wes was here, that there was going to be another dialogue, and we were going to try to work towards, you know, something. And not, merger wasn't in the language at the time that I remember. So, that, one of, and the last thing, and this is for further discussion down the road, as far as rate increases, I understand, at least from what I can make of the flow data, that, if you can make anything of it, that it's not the crisis, the load is the crisis. And I think we've heard, also heard that from Wes. And so, at some point in time, they are going to have to make it bigger to accommodate the load. And I want to go on record in front of us to say that basically, a lot of that should be dealt with with SDCs. It shouldn't be rate increases. Let's face it, we are on the shortest end of the shortest stick. And for us to make up the difference for people growing, it's just not right. I don't mind us paying us fair share, but to me, that's just out of whack. Something, something else needs to happen there. Oregon City certainly is going to grow, and they can make up some of the growth with their SDCs, same thing with Westland, and everyone else. So, those things being said, I guess, what are we going to do about the resolution itself? Can we change the dialogue? Can we amend it? Can we move it? Can we morph it? I'm, I'm telling you right now, I'm not comfortable with some of it.
Can you tell us exactly which parts it is you're not comfortable with? Because I believe we do have the authority to amend, and if we have an, if I have an idea of what it is you'd like to remove, or what you'd like to add, I, I wouldn't entertain that.
All right. Well, and this is a minor point, but I might as well bring it out. None of the governing board members of TCSD or country reside within the district or directly affected by the rate of decision they impose on others. You know, all right, tit for tat, but that's not a big deal for me. They're elected officials of the county, deal with it. Second part of this is, another thing I've got is, "These positions and others have placed Clackamas County Board of Commissioners in incurable conflict of interest position in independently and effectively representing TCSD, CCSD-1, and Wes." I'm not so sure it's incurable. And it's just, it's just too harsh for me to say, you know, they can't fix this, they will not fix this. So, again, I'm the one, maybe Oregon City's got the right to say that, but I don't think we do. Right after that, the paragraph, where was that paragraph at?
It's the...
Four, three, and the fourth one down.
Yeah.
Four dash three, fourth one down. Let's see, the next paragraph, which is the fifth paragraph, "Clackamas County through Wes has operated, overseen, maintained TCSD's stewardage treatment plant, and has mishandled multiple issues, example of which are violating state procurement laws, district public meeting laws, firing a whistleblower accessory." You know, the thing went through court for months, all the trade says one thing, judgment say another one. Again, this is just me. That's a little bit too broad of a stroke to say, "They've mishandled all of this." You know, when I say, you know, the shoe's on the other foot, or whatever it is, but that's just, it's just too strong of a language for me. And let's see. And then the next one, right after that, "Because of the issues identified above, lack of representation within TCSD, conflicts of interest, mismanagement, has caused the City of Gladstone to lose faith in the ability of Clackamas County Board of Commissioners to effectively govern TCSD." Again, and I will apologize, but guys, I'm not there. I just think, I can't piggyback on Oregon City and their history of the conversations and non-conversations with the county to say, "This is the way I feel about it." And I, so, I just wanted to put that out there. Maybe you don't want to take it out, but I have issues with saying I've lost faith in them, because I don't, have had numerous conversations with them about this, so. And then the last thing, and I'll point out, is a paragraph right below it. If you go up to the second paragraph, they talk about there's a number of intergovernmental agency between and among TCSD, CCSD-1, and the county regarding that. And then right down in paragraph six, "There are other options under Oregon law, including intergovernmental agency agreements, which allow the three cities and the resident of district to participate in governance." So, on one hand, you're saying there's already some in place, and on the other hand, you're saying there's other options, including, what does that mean? They're already there. That's, so, those are just the things I wanted to point out that I have. And if anybody wants to have a discussion on them, fine. If not...
I believe that, having been associated with this, the history of Oregon City is our history as well. I mean, we are our sewer district. I believe all of these to be accurate, I've read this several times. I know that I have had comments from members of the public on the, the, one, two, three, four, fifth, whereas on page 43, operated, overseen, maintained, mishandled multiple issues. Because I've heard that from several people, if it would help, I would be willing to see that removed. I think it's accurate, but I'd be willing to see that removed. But the rest of this, I think is accurate.
Steve, in paragraph number four, removing the word "and" and "incurable," and just make it commissioners "in a conflict of interest."
I would be willing to do that, yes. That's, that's a mayor.
Yes, your mayor, would that...
Yeah, that's better for me.
What was that again?
Yeah, I go for.
Right.
Right at the county board of commissioners, "In a conflict of interest position in independently and effectively representing TCSD and CCSD-1 and Wes," instead of an incurable conflict.
Okay. Just in a, okay. I was thinking maybe number six, instead of lose faith, questions inability.
So, so, read the sentence.
So, I'd be, throughout the whole sentence. "Issues of identifying above include lack of representation from TCSD, conflict of interest and the mismanagement of TCSD by Wes has caused the City of Gladstone to question the ability of Board of Commissioners."
Question the ability to effectively govern TCSD.
I also have a big concern in what was brought up, where over the years, you had the same person signing the intergovernmental agreements on the same page. I mean, you know, it goes back several years, several terms, and it, you know, lawyers have said that, yeah, it's legal, but me personally, it just doesn't pass the smell test.
There's some ethical questions about that, but yes, the lawyers have said it's legal, yes.
And so, that's a concern of mine.
And from your, just one further question, I would, that'd be okay with me, instead of using that verbiage on that paragraph. So, Steve, can you make a comment on the merger, as far as you understand it, that they're supposedly going to vote on? How does that supersede or impact what was voted on, what got us here to begin with? The vote of the people to say, "This is the way it's going to be run."
And that's still, that's still a question in progress. My understanding from conversations with Oregon City is that it would appear that both districts are going to have to vote on a merger, but that's still a legal question in progress. So, I don't know that I have an absolute answer for that. But it would appear that, since the district was created by a vote of the people, if there's going to be a merger in our district, it would have to include a vote of the people. But with the, with the Regional Waste Water Committee votes for merger, there is a possibility that during the time period where lawyers get together and start reading it, things can start happening, contracts could be signed, work could start, millions of dollars could be spent, so that by the time it ever got to a ballot, it could be along the lines of, "We've already spent $50 million, how could you not merge? How could you not vote to merge?" You know, you have some of those problems occur.
But I mean, in the short term, I guess I'm trying to get at, right now, we have, we still have the Tri-City Advisory Board as voted on, voted in by the people. And those people are still the advisory board, so what happens?
Well, actually, I think, well...
You know, I think I can fill that in. But the Tri-City Advisory Committee has, for the life of Tri-City, been the city managers for the three cities and the Wes director. At the last Tri-City Advisory Committee, the committee voted, including the Wes director, to remove the Wes director as a voting member. It would be as if Mr. Schultz was, was a voting member of our council. That has since morphed in at the county to, "We need to change everything, blow it all up and start over." And that's, that is also still an issue that's under discussion, at least I think it is. But it sounds like the county may have already imposed their will on us on this, and is going to make the changes. I'm not sure where that's at today. So, I'm not sure who the advisory committee is for Tri-City. Is it still the managers? Is it still the three managers and the Wes director? Is it this new concoction approved by the county commission? I'm not sure who is the advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners right I'd love to have an easy answer, but... I'd love to have an easy answer, but there's a lot of transition right now.
Steve, uh, I believe I know what this resolution's about, okay? But what is the purpose, in your mind, of this resolution?
Sends a message to Clackamas County that we need to, that we are asking for a change in governance, we're asking for the ability to govern ourselves.
Okay, and we're saying we want West Glen, Oregon City, and Gladstone to work together to figure the district out?
That would be the general intention, is to create bylaws on the charter and, uh, create the governance of our district.
Okay. Uh, based on that, which is where I'm coming from, uh, mayor's comments about wording or whatever, uh, I like to keep things positive, and the midsaying doesn't really do any good, so why have it in there, period? Okay?
I think we've removed some of it, so...
Yeah, and the idea of having a governance different will be had, it hasn't seemed to work, or, we don't believe that it has worked. Uh, I'm for the support of approving the resolution.
Okay, well, we're not, okay. We have to make that motion and, when we get done with our discussion. Anybody else?
So, were we gonna make some of these changes? I mean, I've made some notes on some of them.
Do you think I...
I only three, I only see three changes right now, I know that you had brought some others up for discussion. Um, if we make those three changes and take out the non-positive words of "incurable" and "lose faith," and lose paragraph number five on page four dash three, do we have enough of a resolution here to move forward?
And my question is, um, to the city administrator, do you think these changes will affect any legal opinion of our legal staff?
In my opinion, once again, life according to Ross, not necessarily a legal opinion, but I think what you're doing is sending a message to the Board of Commissioners that you're not satisfied with the direction they're headed, and I think the wordsmithing that you guys have done, I think makes it more of a positive document as opposed to one where you're gnawing on their ankle, and not that Oregon City necessarily does that, but we have our own way in Gladstone, and, uh, I don't think any of the wordsmithing you do right now will matter much in the final intent of the resolution, and I don't think there's an issue with you being sued or having some sort of a legal obligation at this point. I think you guys get to make the statement that you're making and move forward.
All right, so the three changes that we pointed out was in, take, uh, four dash three, uh, paragraph number four, taking out "and incurable" and just replacing it with "a conflict," uh, taking out all, paragraph number five, talking about the mishandled issues, uh, changing paragraph number six to say that we are, um, questioning.
There, you go, Gladstone to lose faith and is replaced by questioning.
All right, yeah, and just to change that, to question the ability of Clackamas County Board of Commissioners to effectively govern T C S D. So, those are the three changes that I see. Anybody got anything else? Everybody clear on those, on those changes?
I will...
Jolene, did you get those?
I got some of them, I'll listen to the...
No, okay, all right, all right.
So, if we make a motion, do we have to, uh, notice all of these changes or just as edited?
As amended.
As amended, yes.
Okay, I would make a motion to adopt resolution number ten sixty-three as amended.
Second. Okay, I had a motion from Counselor Sickman, uh, to adopt a resolution ten sixty-three as amended, seconded by Counselor Johnson. Uh, at this time, any further discussion on this matter?
And for me?
Saying no. All in favor of passing this in ten sixty-three? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion ten sixty-three has passed. All right, going down to items, the, um, the thing I took out of consent agenda, which was the final approval for payment for the ADA park at, um, Cross Park, like ADA ramp at Cross Park, and I don't have the documentation in front of me, uh, but I'll just kinda paraphrase to, kinda a couple of things that came up in my mind. Um, I'm kinda concerned, one, we had a bid, RFPs put in, we took the bid of seventy-six or seventy-eight thousand, whatever it was, by the company. Um, shortly thereafter, there was supposed to be a timeline, there was a pretty specific timeline on it, the timeline got blown through. Uh, the first payment made to this, uh, organization or this company was to tune of something in the neighborhood of eighty-seven thousand dollars, which was above the initial bid, um, and the work wasn't completed at that time, that was the request to get paid for up to that point. Uh, another issue was the add-ons for, uh, I think, and again, I don't have it in front of me, but there was an extra excavation cost or, or stuff like that, and then a change order regarding the handrail system itself, which cost, uh, quite a few dollars. So, all I wanted to put in front of you guys and talk to the city manager about this, about doing this down the road, you know, I've done some of this work myself, and I just had an issue with putting a bid in, and then, through no fault of ours, nothing happened, we didn't change anything that I know of or that I've read, uh, and all of a sudden the price starts going up because of X, Y, or Z. You're in business, this is what you do for a living, my take is, you either forecast it and see it and bid higher, or don't bid. They put a bid in, and we wind up paying for the changes that are made that have nothing to do with us. Maybe they didn't get the holes in their place, uh, they were off-center, whatever, not our problem, that's their job. So, I don't know if we can stop it, I just wanted to bring it up rather than just bang the gavel and get a two on consent agenda, I just have an issue with the whole process, so...
My guess is the change order's been approved, was approved at some point, so, um, I agree with you that we, and I think the new city council will be doing a better job of monitoring those kinds of things. I think, once again, this is one of those Tiger Lake Oswego water project done deals that, but I agree, I agree with you, it was kinda interesting to read that whole timeline of, wow, they said they're gonna be done in October, and then they needed the change for the surveyor, and they screwed up, it sounds like they just screwed up the handrailing two or three or four times, and we're paying the extra six thousand, but I think the change, I think if the change order's been approved, then we have to pay for it, so...
Well, I, yeah, and I think, actually, to tell you the truth, that, uh, part of it is, is that this is probably something we aren't gonna see, we're gonna, we might get the bid and say, "We're passing seventy-six grand," but it's then to the city manager and the public works director or supervisor to take care of this, and I just, our purchase, the way we do things is just kinda weird to me. I mean, I thought we would do a half and a half, or a third and a third and a third as you go along, this paying them before the work is done, and then, of course, it's gonna take longer because they're doing other jobs. I mean, that just makes sense. From a contractor world, it's like, okay, I'll get back to that when I can, and they've already paid me, I, you know, got money in the bank, paid my bills, and that would be the way I would take it as a contractor, but, anyway.
Well, two things, one, um, I guess it brings up the question as to where we at for, you know, uh, been asking for two years for a bid purchasing policy, and it's something that we talked about a couple of weeks ago. Um, supposedly, the attorneys had it, I don't know if it's still in your court, but obviously, it's something that, uh, needs to, uh, brought closer to the top of the to-do list. Um, and then, second, I apologize for, um, this question, but when did we get this information? Was it something emailed to us on this bid?
Jolene, when did the, uh...
It was...
Steve, what do you mean, for the packet, or for...
No, or what you're talking about?
It was emailed to us.
When?
As a memo, oh, a little bit ago.
Last week it was.
Oh, was it? Then my apologies, 'cause I, it must've got buried in some of the others.
It come out as an amended agenda, and I don't have the date that I got it.
Okay. I'm sitting here looking at the confusion on some of your faces, I think I'd like to get done with this item, but I'd like to talk to you about possibly a change to the way you guys get these packets.
All right.
I've seen that work other places, better.
Anyway, that was my two cents on the final approval, so we can, I'll entertain a motion to approve final payment for the ADA Cross Park thing, I'll entertain that motion.
Well, just to let you know, I'm not voting for it, because this is the first I've seen it, and I, I can approve something that I haven't had a chance to, to research and look through, especially this amount of money.
I'll make a motion to approve paying for the Cross Park ADA project.
Second?
Okay, I got a motion by Counselor McMahon to approve final payment for the Cross Park, um, ADA ramp, uh, seconded by Counselor Sickman, all in favor, say, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we don't have to do a discussion, we already did that. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Two nays. That was a last-minute nay there, Tom, you were kinda laying in the weeds there, right?
You want me to take roll?
No, I think we got two nays.
Okay.
Counselor Reisner, uh, Counselor Reisner and Counselor Mercerill.
Okay.
One, two, three, four, okay.
What else has got changed?
Thank you.
All right.
The other issue was in the, was on the consent agenda liquor license.
Right, no, I saw that, and that was the other issue. I didn't have a problem with...
The rest of it, I think, was just liquor license approval.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we already did that, all right.
Well, my apologies, I missed it somewhere.
No worries. All right, uh, so that concludes the regular agenda items, uh, we're moving down to discussion items, uh, Lake Oswego slash Tiger Waterline.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, at this point, uh, last week, we talked about possibly a public hearing, uh, tonight for this issue. Um, Lake Oswego, Tiger, uh, went the extra yard and, and made a deal with the, uh, business owners so they can work during the day, so at this point, they do not need to come before us and ask for a variance, so therefore, doing away with the need for a public hearing on that variance, so that's why you're not seeing them here tonight. Um, wanted to, uh, talk to you, uh, one of the counselors said, as a matter of fact, I've had a couple of requests from the counselors, gee, the water line's going on, and there's still things that aren't fixed, et cetera. Uh, I've talked to our public works manager, and he's, uh, gonna be the final point for anything that's a punch list item before they get out of the city, so if you guys have, uh, a particular issue, and he's already got a list started, there's probably twelve or thirteen things on it, some of them are kinda substantive, um, he's gonna list that, and he's gonna get a status for you, perhaps we'll put it in a monthly report to you, so you guys can see what's on the punch list, and see what's coming off, and how that's getting taken care of, so, uh, anything you've got, I'd love to know about it, 'cause it'll get on that punch list. I talked to the rest of the managers today, the police, the fire, there are people that move around the city all the time, uh, so we can get a list of those things.
Do you want those to go directly to you, then?
Yeah, if you don't mind, send them to me, and I'll send them on to Scott, and he'll, uh, compile that list, and hopefully you'll be able to look at that list and see your item on there, and either see it resolved or still in process or something. I don't know whether we'll end up negotiations by the time the project's over, but it's good to get a jump on it now as opposed to waiting until they're pulling all their equipment out of here, so... Um, and that takes care of what I've got for Lake Oswego Tiger Waterline, and I was on channel six, and I tried to plug the city, uh, in an interview about the water line, but they cut the plug out, so, anyway. Um, the next thing on there is the water system and stormwater master plans, both of these plans are done and setting in the office, complete. Um, evidently, there's a process that takes near forty-five days to get them adopted, you guys are the last part of that, where you hold a public hearing for people that got pros and cons on it. It's gotta go, uh, to the L C, D C, I always get that one wrong, they've gotta look at it, uh, the planning commission, I think, has to send it officially, so it's gotta appear before planning commission. By the time all that gets done, you're gonna be into September, possibly October, before we have adopted water and stormwater master plan, so I just wanted to let you know those two items going on.
But that start, that fuse has been let, it's...
Yes, it is, yeah. Um, it is with, actually, the, the county planner right now, who is taking it through the process, uh, that's his job, and so, he's gonna move that through. Um, with that, those are my discussion items, except I would probably add one, what do you guys think about setting up some three-ring binders for each of you, so when you come to council, you have a three-ring binder, and it's got all of the very latest information in it, and although, like Counselor Reisner has not seen that one, got lost in the email, it would've been in that three-ring binder. Now, you'd still get your other packets like you get it, and you could take your notes and that sort of stuff, but at least you'd have the official presentation, I mean, I slipped in another resolution on you tonight, and it just sat on the tabletop and stuff, and so, anything from the initial agenda packet would be on colored paper in that three-ring binder, so you could turn the pages on your three-ring binder, and you would always know what the differences were. Um, if you'd like me to try something, I'd be glad to give it a shot, and one of the meetings coming up, and, uh, I don't know, I just, I feel bad, 'cause you're getting a lot of information on your desk that you haven't seen or may not have seen, and I think that's, I mean, comments?
Reference to item number somehow, whether you have...
Yes.
Binders or whatever.
Yeah, you basically get the same binder that I've got right here, but it would be with everything current in it for that day. You guys...
Well, I say what you're saying.
You've asked us, you've asked us to back up a whole week, and unfortunately, in that week, things change, business happens, and, you know, so we're relying on you getting it off of email, and that's not necessarily a positive response to, like legislation, you really need the most current version, and sometimes, I mean, I was changing this amendment this afternoon at four o'clock, it's tough for me to put that forward. I don't know, would you like to try something different? It's up to you guys, I'm just suggesting. One of the, one of the challenges that I've had is that we're getting information by email, and if we don't print it out, it doesn't end up here. Right. I mean, in a perfect world, there'd be a computer sitting here, and there wouldn't be any paper, we'd be able to shuffle the pages, we don't, we're not there yet. Um, you know, if we could just get the stuff that is emailed to us also printed, even put it in our boxes, if nothing else, that would be very helpful to me. Um, I'm certainly capable of printing it out myself, but...
Sure.
I have missed doing that at a previous meeting, and Counselor Reisner has missed doing that on this meeting, um, so, you know, if we could, if we could get those printed, that would be helpful, and I'd be willing to try the three-ring binder thing as well, that might be interesting.
Well, I tell you, I could just, uh, change the color of the paper for anything, so that the latest version would always be in yellow, or green, or goldenrod, or whatever, but, uh, maybe we could try that first, and if that doesn't help you along, yes, sir.
So, if I understand you right, you would have everything we got in our box at the beginning of week...
Right.
And any additions in the three-ring binder?
And the most current addition, 'cause even sometimes the additions change between the time you see them the first time and the time they hit here, so, and I would change them in color, so the initial legislation that you see in your packet first, anything that changed would be in a color, so you would know that, oh, that changed, or that's additional, and you guys could maybe take a little more comfort in that, I don't know.
I'm not opposed to it, I just, I'm just concerned about the workload for the girls downstairs making now the second copy, and they already...
Yeah.
This is not the best system, but, I mean, if you think you could do it without too much disruption...
I think, you know, the currently binding these and sending them around, I think, if you got it email and then a hard copy, you could either print it out yourself, I mean, if you want me to stick a copy in the box, that would be up to each individual counselor, I'd be glad to do that. Um, but, I don't, this has worked in the past, and so, you got a binder, and it's at least got the current data, so as you turn the pages during the meeting, you're looking at the current stuff, you don't have to nudge your... You don't have to nudge your fellow counselor. It's a thought.
Alright, well, I'm okay with trying it, I mean, you know...
Let me talk to Jolene and see if we can pull that off by the next council meeting, and maybe give you guys a different look, and if you don't like it, we can go back the way we're doing it right this second, so...
And I'm certainly interested in, you know, trying something new to make it better, but I just, as you have been very good at so far, so far, just keep the staff time, I mean, they got a lot of things on their plate, too. And now we've thrown one more council packet ahead of us.
Well, I think, so, in the end, I think it's gonna be worth it, and I don't think the work is that much more, so, low work, high return.
Mayor, I have a comment and business carried forward if we are to that point in our agenda.
We've done, we've done what, yeah, okay.
We talked earlier about SISL Engineering. My trailer from the council was to go forth and get a proposal from them on a flow meter study. As we've discussed previously, it doesn't appear that that's going to be the case, however, Pat SISL has provided us with very valuable information, and I think that we should find a way to pay him for his time. He's gonna come to us with a final report. Those details, and Mr. Schultz is working on right now, I bring that up to the council so that you don't have a surprise in your consent agenda for extra charges. And if there are any thoughts on that, maybe you could share that with Mr. Schultz as well, but those are my thoughts on that issue.
And I would say that you did what we asked you to do, which was to go to SISL Engineering, and they did what they thought they could do, and they came back with an answer, so I would have no problem, I would expect, actually, that we would be billed for the work they did. It's not the answer we wanted...
It has value.
It has value, it's the answer we get.
My question is, haven't we already approved that? Would that even need to be a consent agenda item?
Well, if I may, Counselor, I spoke to Mr. SISL, and I said, gee, you've done some good work for us, can we pay you something? And he said, no, 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 no. Now, whether that means you haven't seen the bill or not, I don't know. He is, I will tell you, the subcontractor on the sanitary master plan that you will see on the eleventh for approval, and he will, I'm not saying be paid more or anything, but he's gonna be engaged with the city as a subcontractor on that plan, and I think he will probably let all that run together, if you will, so...
My concern is, to be fair, and to keep the council informed as to what's going on.
And furthermore, I'm gonna pull this off the business carried forward, 'cause it's no longer business carried forward, so that's, that's the way that would go.
Okay.
Update on council goals, I don't really have an update for you, but I wanted to make sure that we had it here. I've spoken with several of the counselors about possibly a town hall someplace in September. I've spoken about even having another retreat, but I think that's up to council's pleasure at this point. I could follow up and status the goals that you guys have put forward, you've already, I've got a stack of paper, I just haven't had the time to open it up and look at it, so, that's the only update I have there, and it'll appear again on the eleventh, unless I have more information for you there.
That's it? Okay, at this time, we're gonna try our new business from the audience, the second opportunity for the audience to address the council on any item not on the agenda. No takers. Okay. Well, now, business from the council, starting from the left. Counselor McMahon.
I have nothing at this time. I'll be in the parade, it's coming up this weekend, car show as well. Be there if you wanna ride on the fire engine, leaves at ten o'clock sharp, and you get a throw candy.
Go ahead, I want you.
Well, I'd like to bring up a thought that in regards to our charter, was something that our subcommittee touched on when we were looking at going forth in recruiting a new administrator. The title of administrator versus manager, it's also been discussed, some other items in our, in our charter that could use some updating. I think the last major overhaul was done back in eighty-six, so, you know, thirty, almost thirty years ago. So, something that I would like to propose, just as a thought now, maybe some more discussion down the road, and make it, you know, more of an official proposal, is put together a charter committee, which might include a couple of us and some citizens to make some possible changes. Actually, I know Counselor Mercerel has some questions in regards to elections, and which, you know, Counselor Sickman and myself also, I don't wanna say concur, but also have, so that's something I think we could, should look at maybe in the future. Also, something I discovered today, when I was putting together my government class, Metro had a work session this afternoon in regards to what happens to our garbage after it gets to the transfer station, and they're looking at different options, and so I just wanted to maybe, you know, throw it out there, there, I'm not sure what happened at their work session, I encouraged my students to go watch, but they're planning on giving some direction to their staff, and make some, start making some decisions this fall, so, being that we're not necessarily in that business, but we contribute to it, but something you might have an interest in. And then, last evening, was able to participate in the coffee with the counselor, and had some great questions and discussion, and I think we need to maybe talk with our librarian and see if we might be able to extend library hours on those nights, just kidding. Because the, every time, you know, the times that I've been there, we bump up to close to eight o'clock, and the staff is politely reminding us that, you know, the time is short and that we close at eight, and, like I say, it was a good discussion, good questions. And that's all I have, and just hope to see you this weekend at the festival.
So, I know you're all tired of hearing about regional wastewater, but there is a regional wastewater meeting on Thursday, and it would be great if as many of you could come, would. I think they do the, they do take role of who's in the audience, and I think that makes a difference, so if you can make it, it's six-thirty up at the county on Thursday. The only collector and the motion that we made in regard to earth crusaders, does a plan to clear and secure the excite exist? Is there one in process? Will we be hearing about that?
No plan exists. I have discussed this with the fire department in terms of what they could do or would want to do, but they haven't come back to me with any kind of a thought. I kinda was interested in seeing what the resolve would be to getting the property vacated, so we could then go forth and clear, and actually, not even certain what needs to be done there, so until we get possession of it again...
Maybe that's what my question should have been, what should we be doing with that property at that point? So, future discussions, I'm sure.
Yeah, I don't think the fire department's real hot on it, but, 'cause, you know, they don't like discharging stuff into the river, and if you lit that thing on fire, you'd continually be putting stuff back in the river, so... But certainly, they could do some other kinds of training there.
Right. And I agree with Counselor Reisner on the charter, we could certainly do a charter committee and review. There is a section in our charter on elections that is essentially unreadable, and could do with some editing, and some word smithing, and there are other issues there as well. And I would also be at the community festival, and I'd be part of the booth at the park, midday Friday, midday Saturday, I'll be doing booth duty, people are also signing up. Come on down, it should be a lot of fun. Counselor McMahon has invited me to ride on his fire truck, so I will be here off the fire truck as he rolls down the street with the siren going. Never done that before, so, hope to see you all there.
A lot of fun.
Thank you.
Go ahead. For a quick comment, last meeting, I believe, I gave Mr. Schultz an ad away for his weekly newspaper, and this week, I'd really like to extend that, and I wish you would, because I only see a couple of people out here that have been writing these portions, and like on the Public Works, there's half a page there, which showed things pretty well, but there was one for each, library, police, senior center, fire, administration, everybody participated, even more last week, and I think it's valuable information, it certainly helps me.
Good, thank you.
Pass that along to staff.
Please.
Well, I also wanted to comment on what I coined the Schultz Report, and I wanted to commend staff, as well as you as getting information in, I think it's a great new addition, I think it's beneficial for all of us. So, I really appreciate, yeah, keep them coming. The other thing is, the festival this weekend, wanted to remind all of our staff to, I mean, if they wanna participate, there is a city booth up at the park, if people from Public Works wanna talk to the public, the library has their own booth, they usually do to promote library cards and that sort of stuff, and the things that they're doing, but I know police and fire usually are in and out of the booth, city administration, senior center will mostly be up there, I think, on Friday for Senior Day, but they're also welcome to be there all weekends as well. I guess, I've heard a rumor that Saturday morning, there will be a dunk tank rolling in. I have heard that there may be throughout the day on Saturday, a couple of elected officials that may end up being in the cold seat, which might not be a bad place to be this weekend.
Yeah, for sure.
So, keep an eye out on that. The other thing is, Tuesday after the festival is National Night Out, and I was hoping that's a police, it's National Night Out Against Crime, there's numerous community events, I'm not, I used to be heavily involved in that, I'm not so much anymore, but it's something I still support. I sent an email to Lieutenant Jolly today, we were talking about festival, and I asked how the council could participate, and hopefully, he'll get back with me, and any information I get, I'll share with you, and maybe you can disseminate to the council for anybody that wanted to participate in that. Go ahead.
Well, I don't have too much, twelve, three, and five on Saturday, I dare y'all to come down and dunk me in a tank. I just double dare y'all. Those are my times. That's all I got. Thank you, everyone. Meeting is hereby adjourned at seven fifty-five.